Go ahead.
Okay. Call this regular meeting at Grand Forks City Council to order. The first item is to adopt the agenda for May 21st. Motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Korlick, Counselor Krog, just itching your ear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Park Spinal is going to which?
To which?
Park Spinal.
We're dealing with that as business arising from the minutes. All those in favor? Okay, and the minutes of May the 6th, regular meeting minutes, so we'll accept them, counselor, and then we'll deal with business arising from them. So can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of May 6th? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Studeley, all those in favor? Okay, and let's deal with business arising right now. Well, let me just knock off this other special meeting because it's meaningless except for the tabs. We have a motion for that, to adopt that, those minutes. Counselor Korlick, Second Counselor Zalinski. And let's deal with business arising from the regular meeting minutes, and that is the topic you brought up, Counselor Thompson.
Yes.
Where is he? Massey Park.
Yes, I would like to see, I would like to see Massey Park included as a no camping park room. That was omitted from this bylaw, so I would like to have the bylaw amended to include that, please.
Okay, can we have a motion, a second or not a motion, rather, Counselor Korlick? Discussion on that? Counsel?
Yes. May I ask Mr. Mayor, like, we would need the bylaw amended, so we can't, like, we can't just add something to the list.
Yeah.
An official amendment of the bylaw.
Okay, well, then I would change my motion to read to a thing.
We already have that in a previous meeting. We have a resolution to bring back the parks and access bylaw at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Will that include Massey Park as part of that bylaw?
That's up to council, but yeah, that was the discussion that I understood.
Okay, so with this resolution, would that give the authority to include that in the amendment to the bylaw?
Well, the bylaw will have to come for all four meetings, so yes, over time, it could definitely happen.
So this is just to give direction in terms of that one issue?
Include that.
So, Your Worship, likely, the best thing is to have a resolution freeing the council's directing staff to include in the amended bylaw to add the George Massey Park, and then that will keep the process going.
Okay, and we have that on the table with the second or. And recognizing the difficulty here is that we need to also comply with the rule to have an option of a place where we're not telling people they can't count. But we'll deal with that when we review the bylaw. All those in favor?
Just a question for clarification, Mayor. We're still gonna bring back that whole bylaw to the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Carrie.
Question for the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The electric vehicle charging policy, any idea what that would be about?
How's it going?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I communicated with the Deputy Manager of Operations on this. He informed me that the electrical master plan is currently in the process of being completed, and he would really prefer to wait with the electrical vehicle policy until after that master plan is completed, than tie directly into it. Now, I asked the manager to maybe make a small presentation to the Committee of the Whole Meeting to explain this to council.
Counselor Zalinski?
Presentation made to council on the whole thing?
On the, on the process and the timelines.
Okay. Anything further on these minutes, or business arising from these minutes? Hearing none, going on to the Purley School rewilding project. Sharon Perron is here, and I apologize, there were some misunderstandings with Sharon in the situation, and she's here now to present her own case, her counsel, Sharon Perron.
I'm Sharon Perron, and I'm grade one teacher at Purley Elementary School. I have two colleagues here, Carrie Orman and Erica Thorpe, doing a little moral support. So I started rewilding, doing outdoor education about eight years ago after going to a primary conference, and when I came back, one of the first things I asked for was a blanket permission form for me to take my kids out whenever I wanted. So that was sort of the first thing, and it's not maybe a legal document, but it was good enough for me, and I started taking my kids out, doing all sorts of things, math, art, science, social studies, we've come to City Hall, and all sorts, various tours and parts of the city. And the value of it was immediately very prevalent for me. Last year, my colleague Carrie, grade one, two class, and myself collaborated, and all of us together with all our kids wanted to do the outdoor school as well. So we immediately found out that it was really difficult. There was some really challenging kids, and it was hard to get them off the school property. And so that's when that root idea sort of solidified for me that we needed an area on site so that all the children can experience nature and all the benefits that my class was getting, that all the children can have, even if they're in a wheelchair, or they've got other kind of special needs, or behavioral problems, or whatever. So that's when the idea started, and we went through the steps, going to our principal reports, and our PAC, the superintendent, the school board, our children, sorry, there they are, and we're doing some Aboriginal history, and this is the story of Frog Mountain. And so all sorts of subjects, math, science, socials, art, lots of Aboriginal content. It's very easy to do, outside. This little drawing, I was told I had a magic thing here. Sorry, I'm not very good with this, so I gotta go back. This little drawing was made by one of the grade one, two students, and the child, all the children, more than seventy percent, eighty percent of the children had a water feature in their drawing of what they wanted the rewilding center to be, and that was never in my original sketch, because for me, water, dangerous, I don't want that, and so all of a sudden, we were presented with all these visions from the children, which was water, water. And so we started brainstorming, how can we incorporate water without making it a risk? And we started thinking about, maybe we'll have a dry creek bed and a dry pond with water access, where the children can build their fairy gardens and build their ponds, and then turn the tap on and let the water trickle down and fill the pond. So that's, the kids made a presentation to council, which was awesome, and there's the superintendent and some of the school board and staff members, and the kids really feel ownership to this whole project. I want to underline that it is a project, it's not like it's gonna be finished next week. This is a project that's going to be, the kids will be working on, we as a school and the community will be working on. There is the diagram as it stands now, so the one you saw in the previous PowerPoint was the second attempt and the first drawing, and this is the second official drawing, and it's, the area of concern, there, is this area. So there'll be hydrant up in that corner, this is, is that, I think that's, am I wrong?
Set down the grid.
On that end is seventy-three?
I'm not sure what that street is.
Anyways, that is, there's an alley going where it says gate, right there, that's the gate, and there's an alley runs along here, and this is where the street is. I can't remember the name of the street, I'm sorry. But the, I know, I was told that right about here was where there's a water line in the sidewalk, the main, a main in the sidewalk. So what we're hoping to do is have a hydrant there with a little creek bed about where those rocks are, and a little pond area. And so then I thought, okay, you know, here's my letters of support, everything's official, we're ready to go, and I started getting financial support. So first of all, I'm sure that I got support from Regional District, five thousand dollars. I want, you know, your project, it's valuable, it's important, it's maybe critical for the earth to develop children that are very aware of the earth and their connection to it. So I received that grant, and then I applied for the Tree Canada Grant, it's a federal, private federal grant, thirty-five hundred for plants and trees and materials to support the plants. Then community support, this is what we've got so far. So Sun Ranch Timber Company, big logs and stumps to put around, Grand Peak Gravel is bringing in a big load of aggregate to put around our community meeting area, and some large rocks, river rocks, for building and balancing, making an oak type structures. And Home Hardware gave us tons of children's gloves. Boundry Home Building Center cost, gave us fencing at cost to fence the perimeter. Wogan donated a large crushing home to use as the center of our community area, as a meeting spot, and concrete paving, what am I just going to write?
I can't remember.
Oh, I'm sorry, concrete paving. Anyways, because I haven't been in on the whole one. Yes, everyone's been very, very helpful. And this is what we want, not this exact model, it was just a Google search, but this, I have two of these on my property, and they're awesome because, of course, you don't have to blow out the lines. So our school lines are all blown out in the early fall, late fall, and there's no more water across the school property. And I, we would still want water in the rewild area for all the wonderful things that could be done with ice and with frost and such as this, lots of entrapping bits of nature and making art. And so I was thinking, how could we get water in the winter too? And that immediately came to mind, that we need a hydrant. And so then, well, why you? Before the thank you happens, why you? So I had that question asked, and the superintendent and I sort of sat down and made a summary of why am I asking you? For one thing, it's my private venture out to the community, and so I approach, I'm approaching all the different facets, including the city, and the city will benefit hugely from this project as well, because these children are going to be our leaders, they're gonna hopefully live here and be involved with nature and projects and parks and water and all these things. So, and influencing their families, I mean, I already see that, how they influence their families. And the, you know, we all know the research about too much green time and too much supervised sports and too much unstructured play and structured play, too much of it, and not enough unstructured play. And this is a real opportunity, it's just amazing, when even this little compound that we've now got, when we walk in and we have our community time, and then I say to the kids, go, they're just, you would never see them, you've never seen them like that, not on the playground, and nowhere else, in the forest, in our outdoor school activities, that's when they're truly, they start being like, I remember being when I was a kid, and they climb a tree, you mean I can climb a tree? I said, well, I'm a really tall teacher, as long as I can help you down, if you need it, you can climb a tree. So they climb and they jump and they build and they explore and they, it's just wonderful to see. And so why, why not the school board? It would ruin the field, which lots of community work groups use, all spring it's soccer, and then all summer activities happen, and if they had to put a new line from the school across the whole entire field to supply the rewilding, there would be a trench through the, through the field for the whole summer, if not into the fall. So that's a big reason. The, I sort of, after I got the big grant from the RDKV, I said, well, yeah, that's great, that's part of our students, but what can maybe the city do? That was my thought, and I said, well, maybe the city would do this, you know? And then I thought, it's not gonna be a huge financial burden, because, well, school's not in session in July, August, and that's the main water source at the time, and it'll just be, a class will arrive, and Ms. Thorpe will bring her kindergarten kids in, and it'll, you know, the water will be on for ten minutes while the children play in the creek. You know, it's not gonna be hours of filling swimming pools or whatever that we're asking for. So we want, we want a connection to the main, to the hydrant, which is within our compound, and we would like a hydrant, and water, water access. That's what I would request.
Thank you, Sharon. We did, we did address this the last meeting, the last time we dealt with this subject, and we had a decision that we would go ahead with having the staff take a look at the implications and set up formal communications on how this is all gonna happen. So I think that council continues to be in support of it, and I appreciate your personal touch here, but council, can I open this up for discussion or comment? Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you two, our operations manager. Do we have a kind of estimated cost to provide the water and the hydrant that Ms. Perron is asking for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did do a cost estimate, so it is unfortunate that the water main is underneath the sidewalks, we'd have to take a section of that out, but to put that back the way it was, to pay for the parts of the water meter, the hydrant, everything involved, and the time, staff time, it was about eight thousand dollars for the estimate. So we would obviously normally build what are the actual costs are, but that was, that was the estimate.
Okay, so that would be putting the connection and replacing the sidewalk. Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's a metered service. Great.
Great. Counselor Krog, sir.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm totally impressed that group seeking funding came to the city second, all right? Because that's on my way here, I'm thinking, well, probably a huge part of the school district is the regional district, so they're students, and people tend to come here and ask the city, and my usual question is, so what did the regional district say? But they've already said it, so I get it, that was the only question I had. So I'm impressed.
Counselor Thompson?
And the other donation.
One other question, through you two, our operations manager, is there money in the budget that would be able to cover these costs? Or would that require an amendment? Because I think it's a wonderful idea, I'm supportive of it.
Can we afford it?
Yes, we could, we could definitely figure that out. There would only be probably a couple thousand in material costs, three, well, probably, probably half of it's material costs, but I'm sure.
The rest is our labor.
Right, so I'm sure we could figure something out.
All right. Great, so we had a tentative green light on this, do you want to make it more formal with a motion? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Krog, further discussion on this. So this is really directing our staff to go ahead with this installation in a timely manner in cooperation with the school board to work out differences in terms of jurisdiction. Counselor Krog?
For the discussion part of this?
Yes.
You're gonna ask a question, because I forgot to ask it earlier. Is any of the five thousand dollars that the regional district put in, is any of that earmarked, through you to her, earmarked for part of the water cost?
No, when I was given the grant, Rowley Russell said that he was putting no boundaries on what I used money for, and I told him I would be trying to establish in my infrastructure. So any, any features that I need to bring in, like, for example, I might have to hire a hiab if I can't get one, to, you know, someone to borrow one, to install some big boulders in feature spots around the area, around the site. So I don't know what that hiab would cost, but probably a bit. So I haven't looked into that yet, but that's the kind of thing that I told Rowley, that I would use his funds for.
Okay. Good for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, right now. Are you opposed?
No, I just want to make sure that the money's coming from the Public Works operating budget. That works.
That's a yes.
Yeah, that's right. Half of that would be staff time that we would allocate, and then others, we do keep some parts at Public Works, so we would absorb or work that in.
Consistent, right? Okay, so we're past that topic. Thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you.
And we are going ahead, so.
And sorry for all the confusion.
No, I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the counselor reports.
Do we have sixty seconds to shuffle some seats around here?
Certainly, go ahead.
Move forward, and then we've got room for three. First come, first served.
Scott and Peter, they wouldn't let you in there. Security's tight up there.
All right, counselor reports, we have two reports, one is Counselor Thompson, we'll start with Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Moazlin has a written report, and we'll go around the table for other councils. Counselor Thompson?
Just a couple of things speaking to my report. I did attend the BEYAC meeting on the fourteenth of May, and the Interior Health has reduced funding for some of the work that they do, and so some of the services that they have been providing, particularly prenatal care, has been, is no longer available, is no longer a service being provided. So I'm, I'm thinking that perhaps at UBCM this year, we might want to have a meeting with Interior Health, and this could be one of the issues that we bring forward, just to have a look at the services that are lacking in our community in this respect. That same day, I attended the Phoenix Foundation meeting, oh, that was on the fifteenth, and with regret, I attended my resignation from their Board of Directors, and as much as I just don't have the time available to put into being the kind of director that I believe I should and could be. So anyone that's interested in serving the community as a director on the Phoenix Foundation Board, please get ahold of Kerry Smith, he is the board chair, and possibly attend a meeting or two as an observer.
You have shocked us, the council as well, I know you've.
I did, and with the amount of work being counselor has taken in the last year, just doesn't give me the time.
Yeah.
To do an adequate job, so.
Okay.
But I did tell them that I'm their advocate, and if they had issues that might, they wanted brought forward, they'll, they'll be sent in.
That's it?
That's it.
Counselor Moazlin?
Yes. Thank you, Your Worship.
Mic's not on.
Anyhow, you have my report, thank you. I won't bore you with reading it. I attended a recreation commission on May ninth, seems a while ago, but that's how it works. And unlike a lot of people in Grand Forks, I watched the assembly of the B.C. Housing Project. The crane is all gone now, the units are there, people are working on them. This is an instant village that has been delivered to us, even though we are still struggling with no clear long-term vision for the wide range of housing necessary to fill that shortage. And that, of course, is what this council has been trying to grapple with. And there seems to be a lot of conversation starting about housing, but none of them are very alacritous, that it's not happening quick enough. I also put a paragraph in there about rethinking the flood mitigation in the downtown core. Council and staff know that I rue the loss of city property in the plan that is put forward, that is, we lose the forks of the river, and we lose city property, valuable city properties that may be home to future high-density structures. Anyhow, I'm hoping that with the loss of that grant application, and with the fact that we don't have anything for the Highway Three businesses east of town, or from Riverside Drive north of the bridge, that we've got a chance to reimagine our needs there, and maybe have it revisioned for future applications that are going to come up. And, you know, I could see, Mr. Shepherd is here from Urban Systems, he might want to comment later. Anyhow, we are still in the, in grant limbo here, we're still waiting to get a clear idea of what senior governments are going to do to contribute to all this work. But for council, you know, our job is trying to keep the confidence in the business community and the rest of the community, so that we can all do our part to shape and revitalize our historic city. Anyhow, on a personal note, we were quite pleased to see Ryan featured, or some Ryan featured in the Gazette this past week, and thanks to everybody who called in. That's my report here, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on Ryan's success in the pharmaceutical research area.
Thank you.
Further reports from council, any comments or reports? Counselor?
I have, I didn't submit a report, Mr. Mayor, sorry, but I did attend both the chamber meeting as well as the Whispers of Hope meeting last week. Chamber meeting, Vanessa Favelle is the acting president until the AGM, which the AGM for the chamber will be June fourth. Both the chamber and the DBA are collaborating on planning, in the planning stages, for murals, poster murals, to be placed within store windows, which will give the downtown much-needed boost for this summer, I think. I'm looking forward to that, and I think it's an exciting project, and the fact that they're working together in that, I think, is commendable. I did, I got to the Whispers of Hope meeting a little late on the same night, it was a long meeting, it went till, what, ten-thirty, I think, yeah? And they did elect their new board with some existing board members as well as some new ones, and I hope for the future, their future is, I don't know what their future plans are, and I think it could be an interesting process all the way along, so though I did do those last week. And one other thing I have grappled with, as Counselor Moazlin was saying, and lost sleep over, and is the housing projects that we're undergoing now. Just to let you know that B.C. Housing is a crown corporation, they make decisions, and that's that. Housing is a crown corporation, they make decisions, and that's that. They do what they think is best for the community. Whether or not is what we think is best, or anybody else, the decision, they have a mandate to have so many supportive housing units within the next few years, and there's thousands of them. So, they're hitting all communities all over the province, and we just happen to be one of them. Now, some of us went on, my colleagues and some of the DBA people went on a tour in Kelowna of a couple of supporting housing buildings, and I was impressed with how they are run and looked after. I have been on the fence about some of it. I needed to be convinced, and I'm still, I'm still here, again, losing sleep, but I was very, very impressed the way they were looked after. The administration was good, their buildings were clean, there's nobody hanging around outside, everybody that comes or goes, and the one that's proposed here is a one-bedroom apartment, which changes the whole format, the outlook on the building itself. So, I'm trying, and I'm looking and working at an open mind at the facility, and I understand where its place is, doesn't issue with people. If it was me and I lived in the same area you do, I'd be doing the same thing you are. However, I know we have, it's coming, and we have a limited timeframe to deal with it, and we're working really hard at doing the best we can for everybody. And that's, thank you.
And further comments, council reports. Anything? Hearing none, motion to accept council reports. Counselor Krog, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? The next item is the regional district verbal report. I'd like to touch two topics. One is the, I think we're going to do with it later on, is the housing survey that they're going to do. It's going to be for the whole of the boundary. It's a fairly major grant application, we're going to be asked to support it later on in the agenda, but in fact, they have taken this initiative, the problem exists throughout the boundary, and I'm really glad to see that they've taken that initiative to go ahead with the grant application to do it for the whole of the boundary. I think it gives it even more perspective. The second item is something that we're, we're beginning to look at, talk about, and that is a development corporation, something that would exist between the regional district and the city. The nature of it is being discussed, but it makes sense that between the regional district and the city, that we might look at a development corporation as an advantage in terms of our investment in projects and various things, not duplicating the existing service structure, but offering a variety of supports to us moving forward through this complex period where, you know, for instance, a project such as the Community Center is on the books, how we fund that, who operates it, who's going to control the actual project, I think that's where this development corporation concept could work for us and to our advantage. It would be controlled by both the city and the regional district, this is not a public board, it would be a fairly simplified structure. So, just keeping that in mind, that that's one of the things that will be discussed in more detail. Before we go down that road, we'll be bringing it back to council with more definition around it. That's my report. Further questions on the regional district that anyone has? Hearing none, a motion to adopt my report. Counselor Krog, Counselor Zalinski, all those in favor? And we are down to our statement of financial information, and may I present our CFO? Behind the post.
To save his place in the room.
You have to see it. You have to see your fly. Yeah, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have our statement of financial information, which we require to file by June 30th every year, and there's some mandatory schedules in here that we have to report on, like pay some payments over $25,000 to suppliers, and council remuneration and floor remuneration. And there's also the financial statements, which were approved as draft financials on May 10th, and then the auditor's report was issued for them. Now, they need to be approved again as audited financial statements.
Okay, and in looking at the SOFI, the financial report, to remind readers that this has been skewed by the overtime and the crisis situation of the flood. And so, what you're looking at there are not yearly salaries in many cases, but in fact are a record of the extra overtime and effort that went in from various departments throughout that flood period. So, we're being asked for two motions here, receive the financial statement is the first motion. Can I have that motion?
Question?
Well, let's...
Motion to get it on the floor.
Yeah, let's get it on the floor. Making a motion to receive it, Counselor Thompson. It's on the floor that we received the financial information and questions.
Yes, through you, CFO, and the suppliers, listed suppliers, I'm not familiar with some of them, so if you could just tell me, there's Cola Avria, Cola Avria? What do they do for us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's our visa cost.
Okay. Then Keystone Appraisals, that's what we paid for all the flood houses, appraisals, and are we able to claim that back through flood?
Is there a refund on the Keystone expenses for appraisals?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that was the appraisals for the, that were done for the DMAT grant, and yes, they were on expenditure authorization request for reinvestment.
So, that's yes.
And the only one I have, else I have is an MSC enterprises.
MSC.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a construction, local construction company. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion is on the table to receive the financial information report. All those in favor? The second is related to the statement of financial information, the SOFI. Can I have a motion for the approval of the SOFI report? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Krog, discussion? You're holding back, I can tell.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. No further on that? The motion is on the floor, this is to support the SOFI report. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Thank you very much, CFO. The next item is the LED Streetlight Capital Project Budget Amendment. And again, here, we're looking at two actions here to adjust the five-year financial plan, and so, I'm not sure how you want this presented.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're looking, originally, we had a budget of $400,000 for the LED streetlight. We went to RFP, the pricing came back, we had multiple bidders, so we went to lighting consultants, and we were looking at doing a policy with regards to the lighting levels. So, the audit that came back from that said that we should add a certain amount of light fixtures. So, we reduced the budget, but we're looking to bring back $50,000 of the budget, but there was also some savings within the capital plan, so the wayfinding signs are just about complete, and there's enough money after reducing it by the, I believe, $40,000 in there, that we can complete that project. So, if we did that, and then with the fuel tanks, coming back to that project at Polar Works, we removed the fuel tanks. We had some environmental monitoring that we thought was going to be more extensive, but it turned out that the drilling and the sampling came back more positive than we originally had budgeted for. So, if we took those two items, it would be just an offset, so it would be a change in the capital plan, but the budget wouldn't have to change, it would just be where the money was allocated within the capital plan.
All right, thank you. So, the 40 and the 10 to offset the 50 increase. Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We should probably get this on the floor for a third motion. Making a motion, Counselor Krog, seconds and discussion?
Through you, today, operations manager, Derek, the audit that you did on the street lighting, how extensive was it? And I guess what I'm asking is whether or not all our intersections were measured to make sure that they're got efficient lighting procedures.
So, in the RFP that we originally put out, we asked for them to take certain intersections and certain streets and give us a value, a light value. So, when we did that, we got some proposals back, they were very different on how they were presented, but the lighting expert that we hired to kind of go through the RFPs suggested that we change our lighting standard. So, the audit was done throughout the city, and we get GIS mapping, saying what kind of light, what the lighting level will be. The policy will lay out that we should have certain minimum standards on certain streets, certain intersections, downtown alleys, parking lots, so it was very in-depth, and they talked about asphalt, light absorption levels, and they looked at all that, so I think it's...
You comfortable with that diligence?
Yeah, I'm just afraid of how many other additional streetlights are added to this new plan. Yes.
Okay. Let's pick this up. Anything for Counselor Moazlin?
Yes, through you, your worship to staff, are we talking about a replacement project? We're replacing existing bulbs? Are we adding, are we actually adding lighting, different mar fixtures as well?
Can you give us the scope of it, of what?
Sure. So, originally in the RFP, I believe there was 590 overhead streetlights, so we would be adding, I believe it was additional 43, to make a more consistent even lighting throughout the city, so that you're not throwing very high wattage fixtures up in certain locations, trying to throw the light, and I guess basically overlighting a certain area to get the reach. So, it would be adding lower consistent wattage throughout the city to meet that standard.
Right. Comfortable with that?
Yeah, sounds very impressive, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on this? Motion is on the floor, this is a vote to support it. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? And the wastewater treatment facility upgrade project, and I understand that Scott and Peter are here tonight, are you speaking to this wastewater?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Scott Shepherd with Urban Systems, and Peter Giellotti with Urban Systems. Our plan tonight is to do a bit of a background, actually, on the wastewater treatment project. There's five new members of council from when this project was first applied for grants, so we thought it'd be good to do a bit of background, so everyone understands what the project entails. There's a couple of grants involved too, so we thought, let's give everyone the same baseline information, and then move into the request at the end. And gonna turn it over to Peter to start things off.
Hi, good evening. Oh, thank you. This is, this is the sort of rough agenda that we prepared, and it includes the background that Scott had mentioned, summary of the grants that were applied for and received, an update on the progress of the project, Tinder summary of bids received on the construction, and funding options, and the next steps. I'm going to do the background and the grant summary and a project update, and then Scott is going to detail the Tinder summary. I can do the background very quickly, if you're strapped for time, or if you want to get into some, I can go through the bit of the story since 2014 is when this thing started.
Go ahead, what do you think?
I'm thinking most of the people here are not here for wastewater. Maybe, I don't know. So, I would go for that short version. My attention span is very limited.
So, the crisp version.
You go ahead. It started in 2014, and it was, it was an asset management exercise, and those exercises, the three key words are the three Cs, condition, capacity, and compliance. The condition of the plant was looked at, and it was, it was by and large in pretty good shape, having been constructed in, or the mechanical plant in 1998, 20 years of operation, and so largely due to excellent operation and maintenance by the staff, most components were in really good shape. The capacity of the processes was also by and large inadequate, with the exception of the sludge, dealing with sludge. And what had been done in 1998 was that sludge arising from the mechanical plant was essentially being dumped into cell number two of the old ruins. And I'm just going to go back for a second here to the cover, and you can see that's cell number two, right in front, and there's a kind of a peninsula of sludge on the surface, and it's sort of like an iceberg, the, you know, two-thirds is underwater, and so after 20 years, there was a massive accumulation of sludge, which was becoming a problem. Then there's compliance, and compliance essentially means the new rules. The new rules were set out by the B.C. government in April of 2012, under the municipal wastewater regulation. And very quickly, what it, where the plant does not comply with new rules is A, disinfection, chlorination is being used for disinfection, and chlorination was no longer allowed unless you dechlorinate to protect fish and so forth, or you use some alternate form like ultraviolet light for disinfection. There must be redundancy in two process chains, in other words, you've got to have two parallel trains, each one of which is able to process the design, the design flow. And then there's sludge management, and that should include a dewatering and proper disposal of the dewatered sludge, not dumping it into cell number two. I can go through a description of the process here, but that could take quite a while. Basically, all of the flow is directed to the newly, to the constructed mechanical plant in 1998, and... plant in 1998, and that, you know, does the job up to 1,750 cubic meters per day. The effluent then goes through chlorination and is put out to the Kettle River. The two old lagoons were used as vessels for taking any excess flow. In other words, whenever that 1,750 was exceeded, the operator would just go in, turn a valve, and divert some of it into the lagoons. So, the safety factor. So, what was decided then was to, in order to achieve two parallel trains, number one, we would keep the mechanical plant to process its maximum capacity of 1,750. And number two, we would convert these lagoons so that they could also be considered secondary treatment up to the 1,750. So, we end up with two parallel trains of 1,750 cubic meters per day each. The other urgent requirement was to do something with the sludge that's produced by the mechanical plant. And so, part of the project was to purchase and install a de-watering, mechanical de-watering device called a centrifuge. It works more or less like a washing machine on spin cycle. It's sort of, the water is taken out of the sludge, and the sludge forms a cake. And then, it was, we needed to get rid of that island of sludge, actually a peninsula. So, that was one of the other things that needed to do.
Can I just jump in here and backtrack a bit on the UV protection versus the chlorine?
Yeah.
It's my understanding we've been working on UV protection for some time, and we just won't have it in yet?
That's correct.
Is it going to get in?
The decision to go UV was based on a life cycle comparison of the option of chlorinating and dechlorinating versus using UV light. And it worked out that UV light, in the long term, was going to be more cost-effective, because there was no chemicals used, and no hazard to the operator, and a host of different reasons. The, I'll just skip ahead. The application for the UV light was put into a program called the New Building Canada Program, which was the only one existing at that time. And the city figured, for the amount of money that it's worth, they could come up with their one-third. This program was a one-third, one-third, one-third split. And so, at the time, that's all we were gonna do. They were gonna wait for better times to do the overall plant upgrade. What happened later, about a year later, I think it was, they came up with something called the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund. This was an excellent fund, because the federal government provided 50%, the provincial government 33%, and the local government ended up with 17%. So, then they said, okay, this is the time to apply for the rest of the plant upgrade. And that was done, and that was successful. So, both of those applications were successful, except that the older, the older New Building Canada grant wasn't quite as attractive as the Clean Water and Wastewater.
So, are you saying we're using the UV protection right now? Have you gone away from?
It has not been constructed yet. That's part of this, that's part of this award, part of this contract. This depicts more or less what's going to be happening at the plant. Cell number one is being retrofitted with diffusers at the bottom, so that it becomes a true treatment plant. Cell number two had the sludge removed. Now, I should elaborate here in that, in terms of the sludge removal, there was a case to be made for removal of sludge in cell number one, because it was necessary to do that in order to install these new diffusers. But when we tried to make a case for the grant paying for deslедging cell number two, they said, nah, that's really an operations cost. Should've been done, you know, on a year-by-year basis, you know, for the last 20 years. So, that was not funded in the Clean Water and Wastewater. The, a part of the works also includes putting in a blending tank, so that the operator can split the flow either 50/50, or 30/40, or whatever proportions he likes, to either the lagoon train or the mechanical plant train. So, it all goes into a tank, and then he sort of sorts it out where he wants to go. And part of that building also includes this centrifuge for de-watering the sludge, so you won't end up with another accumulation in cell two in 20 years' time. So, that's basically it. The UV disinfection was approved on a basis of $460,000. Recently, we asked them to top it up with another $170,000, because rather than build the UV facility in the building where the current chlorination facility is, which last year flooded past the level of the door, we said, well, in light of that, let's move that facility to higher ground. And so, the estimate for moving it to higher ground was $170,000. They have verbally approved that extension, although we don't have anything writing just yet. It's coming in. And then the other Clean Water and Wastewater Fund was to do the two parallel trains. Okay, so, here's Scott with an update on the cost.
Thanks, Peter. I'm just actually gonna go back. So, back here, just talking about the conversion of the, to the two parallel processes on the Clean Water Grant, bottom part there. There's been, over the last couple of years, several tenders that the city has issued already for this. So, one that Peter mentioned was for the deslедging. There was a new casing under the railway for some of the pipes that need to cross from lagoons over to the mechanical plant. We built last year the complete concrete mix tank, which is below grade, so we wanted to do that at a time when there was low groundwater. So, we got that done in the winter before the flooding. We also pre-purchased a whole bunch of equipment and the de-watering equipment as well that Peter mentioned. Initially, the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund had a tight timeline on it. You had to have everything designed and constructed within nine months. So, that's why we had broken it out into several tenders initially. And then through conversations with the province and the flooding, we managed to get some extensions on there. So, we've managed to, you know, defer some of these works for a while, so last year that staff and everyone else could focus on flood recovery, and we paused the UV project and the mechanical plant project for a bit, until things could settle down. So, where we are now, when you add up all the grants and the budget amendments that have been previously approved by council, the total budget for all the works approved was 4.9 million. So, the last tender that, of the remaining works, closed on May 7th. So, this one here is the last bit of work that I didn't mention on the previous page. So, the new aeration in cell one, new blowers, some diffusers in the mechanical plant, finishing off the building for the centrifuge, those types of things. And those are all needed in order to meet the shared cost agreement that you have with the province. So, there's nothing there where we can really defer works anymore. We've kind of trimmed back as much as we can through this project. The other thing we did is there are two grant programs and two separate projects. In order to get some economies of scale with contractors, we talked to them, and we tendered both projects together as one. What we put in the specifications of the contract is that the contractor will supply his invoicing and all his costs separately for the two sites, so the UV site and then the mechanical plant and lagoon site. So, we'll be able to track and report those costs separately through the process. Next one. So, based on our review of the tenders that were submitted, so tender on May 7th, there was three bid received by the city. The lowest bid came in from Maple Riders at approximately 2.9 million. Based on the previous works and the remaining budget from that nearly 5 million that was left, there's about 2.932 million left in the budget. So, with the tender price from Maple Riders being a little bit higher than that, then you still got your construction supervision, contract administration, record drawings, those types of things to happen, and then a contingency allowance there. We're gonna be about $380,000 over that budget, should the city decide to award to Maple Riders. Not to say that all that contingency will be used, but on a retrofit project, you do wanna have some contingency in your back pocket in case things happen that are unforeseen. So, you're retrofitting an existing building with new blowers, new electrical, new HVAC. There's a lot of unforeseen things that could happen there. We've done the best that we can through the design process to mitigate that, but there could be some, definitely some unforeseen conditions there. So, what are the options in order to come up with that additional 380,000? You know, we talked with staff a couple of weeks ago about maybe we can delete some scope and re-tender. We did look at the shared cost agreements with the province on both those grants. There's nothing really left there that we can delete out of the scope and re-tender, so that one's definitely not achievable. The other option is, I mean, the city could borrow additional funds. We don't really recommend that right now. You wanna, you know, maintain your borrowing capacity as much as you can for other projects. Utilizing reserves, again, it'd be nice for the city to maintain those and save those for other things like flood recovery and other important projects. The next option is, we had a workshop with staff two weeks ago, and went through the capital plan, the financial plan, and similar to the LED, it was, we thought, okay, let's reallocate the funding of some of the non-essential capital projects that aren't gonna happen. So, the first one being, as part of the NDMP grant, the city had to set aside $300,000 for your share of that grant. So, being unsuccessful on that grant, there's $300,000 there sitting right now that could be reallocated to the wastewater treatment plant, instead of just sitting there and not being used. The other one is, there was been a line item in the budget to achieve the, there's an M missing there, but the MWR discharge requirements. So, there was been a line item there in the last couple of financial plans for $500,000. We just weren't too sure exactly what MOE was gonna come back with in terms of the requirements. We came back, our design is gonna meet that, so a portion of that was previously allocated to this project for the deslедging of cell two that Peter mentioned, and there's still $100,000 sitting there on that budget line item that essentially does go towards the wastewater treatment plant. So, if we were to reallocate the NDMP and the MWR discharge, that gives us 400,000 funds reallocated towards this project. And potentially, you know, we've gotten the verbal that Peter mentioned on maybe another $170,000 in grant money coming, so then not all that 400,000 would be utilized from the city's reallocation and could be grant-funded there.
Couple things, Scott, it's my name.
Sure.
What's the WR discharge requirement?
The MWR discharge requirements. So, that's what Peter was...
Municipal wastewater regulation. There's an M missing on that.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other question is, number two, borrowing additional funds. We had a borrowing bylaw here just about five years ago. It still has some capacity in it. Would those funds qualify in this situation?
From my recollection, through you, Mayor, those were for multi-utility projects, and I think we had specified certain locations and types of projects, and the sewer plant was not one of those. So, I think there was three street corridors, and then there was also fire protection on the west side, is the other borrowing bylaw. So, I think those two don't really apply, but maybe somebody from staff...
There was one from infrastructure.
So, it looks like what we pared it down to is that we have a deficit of 400,000 to keep in mind here as we adjust the five-year financial plan with the 300 and the 100 from the MWR. So, are we rewriting this motion tonight to accommodate those changes? Yes, we are. So, can we have that motion on the floor to basically do what we just did with the LED lighting, adjusting our five-year financial plan to put some priorities in place and to free up 400,000, those two? Councilor Krog, you make the motion?
Yeah.
And a secondary? Studley?
Question arises. I just see on our second documentation, for some reason in the original, we had $7,000 from the Grandview River Force Made Crossing that doesn't need to be used, and it disappeared in our amended version. If it doesn't have to be used, it doesn't have to be used, so can we add that in?
I'm not sure what the disposition of that is. If we don't need it, is it staying in...
We serve off capital list, then?
Yes, we did that project for much less than anticipated, so we can remove that or close that off as a capital project.
In the financial plan for five years?
Right.
Right. Okay, so it's not going anywhere. All right, the motion is on the floor. Any further questions? Councilor Krog?
Yeah, just the, going back to the NDMP grant, the 300,000, which was our share, but we didn't get the grant. Two things. One is, through you to staff, we don't need to hold on to that for another...
Do we need to have that in the bank, looking for other grants? So that we're not abandoning the initiative, but are we wired to be taking that out of the five-year plan at this point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My belief is that it was set aside for the NDMP, which we were not successful, so we would apply for a different grant, so staff would come back to council if they needed a different sum of money, because different grants have different thresholds.
Okay. Councilor Krog?
We should go back to them after they've sent the letter and just say, oh, we've got our 300,000, we're just waiting for your check. Maybe it got lost somewhere. Please send it.
The guilt of rush, of all that.
It's a bureaucracy.
Okay, the motion is on the floor to adjust our five-year financial plan to the tune of 400,000 dollars. Anything further, gentlemen? No? Thank you very much for the presentation. Council, we're voting on the adjustment to the five-year financial plan of 400,000 dollars. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Thanks, Peter and Scott.
Thank you.
And the next item is the Canfest Music Festival Limited Non-Medical Cannabis Retail Store So, there is a positive recommendation here from staff for the Canfest Music Festival Limited, and its application is the outlet for cannabis, non-medical. Council, Councilor Krog moves, makes the motion. Secretary Corlick, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to hear from the two members that were here previous, the idea of a youth-centered activity, and the difference between an owned building versus a rental building. Do you remember what the discussion was when you passed that bylaw, what youth-centered activity is supposed to be?
Anyone like to tackle that definition of youth-centered?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the definition comes from our resulting file, and so the definition is, a youth-centered facility means any school, daycare, playground, community garden, recreation facility, or other facility designed for use primarily by minors. So, it's not, it doesn't take into account, you know, adult-directed locations... other facility designed for use primarily by minors. So it's not, it doesn't take into account, you know, adult-directed locations where children may be, because that would eliminate them from pretty much everywhere. So it's specifically for facilities designed for children.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, Mr. Mayor, maybe I misunderstood. As far as the two council members that were here, how did that discussion go when you talked with them?
Comment, Crogg?
I believe that we had a conversation probably by email. When it was pointed out, there's a dance studio on the other side, and I totally forgot about anything to do with that. It's used by a bunch of different groups, I believe, like karate and that type of thing. And when I was looking at youth, I was looking at facilities like parks or a library or something. Anybody could rent any building anywhere and start a youth-oriented thing, so do we have to kick out the... So that was my concern, that it doesn't quite fit our... So it would be funny for this.
Right. Counselor Thompson, did you want to comment?
Well, I agree with what Counselor Crogg said, that the issue was the one that I spoke against, was because it was right next to Giral Park. This facility, and I believe there's another one in the same building where the dance studio is, proposed, that was not built for that purpose. That was an old growers' exchange, and it's been purchased and renovated into any number of rooms. And that there is a, I believe, a children's dance class, something that happens upstairs in that building. I mean, that's, that may fall at any time.
But getting back to the basic core here, is there a risk involved?
I don't think so.
I don't see any risk at all, and so I think that definition is too broad in scope unless we do define it better, as Counselor Zelinski has tried to do. Motion is on the floor?
Just a clarity, thank you, Mr. Mayor, is, I don't have a business license application for a dance studio for that location. It's a open space that's rented for various activities. It's not rented, there's no license, you know, I don't have a business license for that, so, you know, it wouldn't be anything that we would have identified and known that was there if there is, you know, a dance studio there. So, you know, I'd look at something like a dance studio that's registered as a business as, you know, catering to youth specifically, but in this case, I think my understanding of the space is that it's sort of a multi-use space that can be rented out for those activities.
Well, I'm just, I'm going by rumor, I guess, if there was dance classes being up there.
There is lots of dance classes, but I guess primarily they're more adult-oriented.
Oh, okay.
So they might have, let's say, 10 different classes, maybe one or two of those 10 might be teen or youth oriented.
Yeah.
And I'm glad Counselor realizes, as we move past the paranoia of cannabis, that we really have to look at, is there any real risk in some of the things that we're dealing with? And I think you understand there isn't.
Doesn't cannabis cause paranoia?
Only in the quantities that you might choose. Okay. Motion is on the floor to approve this. We have a first and second. All those in favor? Carry. And the next is the one I referred to earlier, the grant opportunity for housing needs report.
No, we have seconded the resolution on the operating hours.
Oh, we do? Yes, okay. Yeah, can I have a motion on the operating hours? Counselor Edley has seconded. Counselor Crogg? Any discussion on those? We don't vary, we don't regulate other people's hours. I'm happy to see something open down there that doesn't close at 4:00. All those in favor? Carry. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for not letting me run by that. Okay, the UBCM grant opportunity, again, I introduced this earlier in the regional district report. The fact is, I guess my question was, you know, would we get our fair share of attention in this? And I think that that's going to be up to me to make sure we do. So it will be community by community, and I'll be expected, I will be expecting to be involved in that. I'll be asking to be on some kind of committee or connection so that we get our fair share of attention in the housing survey. Counselor Thompson makes the motion? Counselor Korlick, discussion further?
Just a second please, our manager needs to speak to us.
Sorry.
Yes.
Just, I did talk to Donna Dean that sent out the information for this grant. So each year between community, under 5,000, only gets $15,000, which isn't a lot. When I started looking at the costs for doing a full detailed housing needs assessment, they were upwards of $35,000, and that was being done by a nonprofit group. So this is kind of getting to some economies of scale, so each community, the only community in the region that gets over that is Trail, because there were the threshold, I think. So in order, you know, I think we're going to get better value by pooling than we would if we tried to do this on our own. And Donna just said this to me today, that there's some specific wording. I thought we hit it, but I think that we'd be best just to use the exact wording that they've asked for. This is from the guide for the grant. So we just want to amend the wording, say, so the resolution clearly states their approval for the primary applicant to apply for, receive, and manage the funding on their behalf. So we just wanted to modify the resolution to include that statement, which is directly out of the grant guide.
Is that in the one we're looking at here in the recommended, recommended motion?
So you just want to change that motion to...
Yeah.
And I'm happy with that.
Counselor Thompson, who made, who made the motion?
I did.
Right, so you're amending it to that, that wording?
Yeah.
Counselor Korlick, second and questions?
Yeah, question. So if we apply for this grant and we get it, does that mean additional monies from us to get this study done?
Do we have to kick in monies?
Yes.
No? It's 100% funding?
I would just like to say it's a long overdue.
Counselor Moslin?
Yes, Your Worship, I guess I'm just trying to keep track of all the conversations about housing we're having. There's this one. I'm not too sure what the timeframe for this would be. Maybe I could ask out of staff if the grant application was successful, when would we actually start talking to people about housing in this community?
Yeah, I would imagine there'd be some timeline, as usual with grant applications. Would anyone like to guess on this one? Dolores, would you?
What can we expect in terms of action in our community? My knowledge, it starts very soon, because they've got another intake in November for this grant, for this grant pool.
Likely after the new year, in 2020?
I hope, I hope it's true, but as usual, they probably won't tell us every... Oh, it says, oh, sorry, go up there. It says, "Application of the Vice Stats Application, 60 days following the application deadline."
So is the intent to go for May 31st? Is the intent to make the application by the 31st?
Yeah.
Counselor Moslin, carry.
So I guess my point, Mayor, is that it's worthy, yeah, let's go for it, but it's not timely.
No.
I want to keep going, because there's other housing conversations that we've initiated too. There's the one between Urban Matters and the Boundary Family Services. That is also, I understand, waiting for a grant application to get a coordinator to start a housing conversation.
This is building capacity? That money has been already delivered to the regional district who's holding it? That's 40,000 from Urban Matters?
Yes, but they're applying for further grant.
To talk that up.
To talk that up, so they can hire a coordinator to start a conversation about housing in our community.
That's correct.
So that's the second one.
Right.
And it too, I'm just trying to make the point, there's a lot of talk about housing coming, but it isn't timely.
Thanks.
I can go on, Your Worship. You know, I know that the Boundary Flood Recovery Team has also been examining possible late allocations of land for housing.
Actually, we have our CFO here speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to mention that I signed the Red Cross grant application for a housing facilitator, and that was going to be submitted today. I'm not sure what the notification timeframe on that is, but if that grant were approved, then they would be moving ahead pretty quickly, but that's...
That would be working directly with our building inspector.
That's, well, there was three aspects to that, but one was for a housing needs facilitator and planner to, and then a consultant to look at actually potential for moving houses or...
Getting them fixed up.
Yeah, to see what could actually be done. So that one is in there.
Of course, the question is, is where are we going to move to?
Well, and Counselor, your point is that there's a lot going on, and that you're not complaining that we're doing a lot of things here.
I just get ready, it didn't start two years ago.
Yeah, right. Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there is a lot going on. I know I requested us to sit down and talk about housing quite a while ago, and nothing's happened. So even though we hear a bunch of things, I know this group has not sat down to talk about housing in this community. And I think that's a discussion that has to happen a lot sooner than applications.
I want to point out, Your Worship, that if the motion, the last motion of the order today does pass, another housing conversation that will start will be the resulting public meeting.
But I think you're looking at strategy in terms of sitting down, making sure we're on the same page with where we're going and some of our ideas.
Or on the heat base.
Strategic, strategic planning approach.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
Okay.
Yes, and I concur with Counselor Zelinski's anxiety about that, as we keep getting pressed timewise, but our solutions are not necessarily timely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have a modified motion that's acceptable to the second on the table, going ahead with the grant opportunity. All those in favor? Carry. The election, we're down to bylaws. The election amendment from Corporate Services, we are looking at first three readings to this bylaw change, Local Election Amendment Bylaw Number 2042A1. Can I have that motion? Counselor Thompson? Second or Counselor Korlick? Do we need to discuss, we did discuss this before, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The bit about deleting one early voting opportunity hasn't stood well with me, and I think we have a hard time getting voters out as it is, eliminating one opportunity, I don't think is the right idea, so I won't be supporting it.
You won't be supporting it? Okay, Counselor Thompson?
Well, speaking in favor, I can appreciate the fact that the city was the only one that had a second advanced poll, the regional district and the school board did not. And so that costs money, and I think the reclamation of deleting the one poll, advanced poll, I don't have an issue with that, and I will support that.
And you're making the motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Korlick. Further discussion on this? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Smoke-in-free places, Corporate Services presenting first three readings to this bylaw. Can I have a motion for that? Counselor Korlick? Counselor Studley? Discussion here. We are going to put up signage, we're going to look at identifying places where smoking will be allowed, but we're really tightening up in terms of smoking in general. Counselor Moslin?
Yes, Your Worship, we're on the, we're now on the smoke-in-free places bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, I guess my question is, is section four, where it says this bylaw does not apply to an area specifically designated by the city as a smoking area.
Right.
And I guess my question is, where's that?
We haven't done those yet, but I've been asking that we consider them in some locations where, you know, we have people who are going to smoke, particularly cigarettes, I'm sorry to say. So do we accommodate that? Or do we let people go rogue and throw their butts where they want? I'm in favor of defining some spots where people can smoke.
So, Your Worship, I guess my problem is, is if we pass the bylaw but haven't designated the smoking areas yet?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem to be fair, just basically, hold as bull as there's no smoking area, until we get around to designating some. Should there be an attempt to designate some?
Before we pass the bylaw?
Before the pass the fourth reading anyways?
That would be nice. Hard, and I think that we've got room to do that. And we're also recognizing that businesses can designate a smoking area.
Yes.
Right, so we are, in fact, in the same vote as the businesses, where it's not in the bylaw that we're writing, we are defining within our boundaries where people can smoke, the same as Clydeswood. Do we not have that same right to do?
Wouldn't it be appropriate, Your Worship, to just go past two, pass the second reading? And then ask, request staff to come up with a suggested list of designated areas? I don't know.
Your Worship, I think the intent of this bylaw is to get the actual smoking bylaw in place right now. To specifically go around and designate will be another staff exercise to go and try find some smoking areas. I think that if we have something designated, I think that could be coming through through a policy or appendix or something that would say, here are some of the designated areas. And so I think that the intent is just to, you know, get this piece through and then, because it's going to take more than a three-day exercise to figure out where people are going to be allowed to smoke.
Okay, so it sounds like the best approach we're recommending from staff here, is we go ahead with this bylaw, then we look at identifying smoking areas. Counselor Moslin?
Your Worship, we rushed another bylaw that we're trying frantically to get back to, and that's the Parks and Public Spaces bylaw. I just, I'm a little apprehensive that we're about to make the same error, that we are going to be bringing this back through the committee, the whole, and trying to patch it up.
These are living documents, they get adjusted as we learn more about the situation.
Okay, yeah, ready, fire, aim, let it rip.
Is this on the floor? Did we make, did we get?
Yes. This is motion, say it.
Says the council gives first three readings to the proposed bylaw number 2054.
And it was made by?
That was Counselor Korlick.
And Counselor Studley.
I just want to voice support from Counselor Moslin's suggestion of, it's not costing us anything, waiting another couple of weeks and giving it two readings now and giving it the final reading later.
Well, Mr. Mayor, final reading would be a separate reading anyways, so we can take it to third reading and let staff take over and get the designated areas defined, and then give four three ones, at least two or so are established in the downtown area.
Set it. I don't know what we achieve by just having two readings.
Okay, well, I'm just apprehensive, Mayor, because I've been told before that, you know, once you're, once you pass the third reading, amendments get to be way more difficult procedurally.
Mr. Mayor, there's no more amendments needed if staff is designating the areas. I think these areas may change over time. If we actually put them in a bylaw, we'd have to bring them back to council every time.
It should be in the...
Operations.
Okay.
Okay, so ready for this motion? All those in favor? Oppose? Carry. Bylaw Number 2039A6, this is to change residential, single and two-family to a comprehensive development zone to accommodate supporting housing development on the 2,000 block of 70th Avenue. Can I have that motion?
I'd just like to recuse myself. My property is in close proximity, so I'm going to have to recuse myself from this conversation.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And can we get this motion on the floor? Counselor Thompson, second, Counselor Corlick. And we are open to discuss. This is basically bringing this to first and second reading so that we would go on the schedule that you can see in the description that would bring us through different meetings, Counselor.
I, like most of council, is well aware of the concern expressed by residents of our city as it relates to this development. The previous council, of which I was a member, along with Counselors Butler and Hammett, met with B.C. Housing at UBCM because we were not happy with the way the program was rolled out, nor were we happy with the location, which was at the east entrance to our city. The Vice President of Armin Emerald, at our invitation, came to Grant Works, met with the business community in Studio A, heard their concerns. We then toured Armin to the Old Hardy Field Launch Site and to Broad Acres, and asked if they would consider relocating this development to those areas. But there was no interest in that. We've had, the previous council and this council have had many, many, many conversations with B.C. Housing as it related to this development. And as Counselor Corlick stated earlier, being a crown corporation, they don't have to work with the city. They can come in and just do whatever they want. Yes, I know Maple Ridge put up a hue and cry for the development that's going on in their municipality, but the project is going ahead regardless of what the council and the municipality wanted. When the four lots that the city purchased came up to sale, and the city purchased it with the intent of providing another access to the transition hosts and the affordable housing project, I thought at that time, and I think I did tell you that was during when we spoke on the phone, that I thought that would be a perfect location to relocate the Second Street Development. And I take full responsibility for that. That was proposed to B.C. Housing, and that was the only, the only other location that we ever proposed to B.C. Housing that they even had a second look at. And so we, you may be aware that there had been a very large petition presented to council by residents and local business community objecting strenuously to a development of that time being placed at the east entrance to our city. The, I'm well aware of the upset and concern that you have. I'm hoping, and I'm quite confident, that this development will not cause the concerns that you are anticipating. There will not be, as the two that we viewed in Kelowna have, that they're well-operated. There are no issues. The, excuse me, a proposal, we have signed a letter of intent. There are certain matters that are going to be negotiated. And your job, then, is to convince me and other members of council not to proceed with this. Give us good, sound arguments that we can, we can take into consideration. And I checked my calendar, and I will be at the public hearing the third. I await the following week.
The fifth. Is it not?
Whatever the public hearing is, I'm here that week. But it's my intention to attend the public hearing.
June fifth.
So at this point in time, I support the, and I will be supporting this bylaw for first and second reading. As I said earlier, please resubmit your letters of concern to info@grantworks.ca so that they can form part of the public hearing that we will be hearing on the 5th of June. And there are going to be, in addition to those who are very opposed to this project, I anticipate that there will be those who are very much in favor. So just putting that out there for your consideration. I know, Mr. Davis, you believe I'm in conflict of interest.
You are in conflict of interest.
Counselor, I think that encouraging discussion with the audience--
Oh, I'm sorry. I do not believe I am in conflict of interest--
You should speak to your lawyer.
--and fully intend to participate fully in all discussion, debate, and voting on this matter.
Okay. Counselor Krog is next.
Yeah, just through you to staff, because we don't have costs yet. Will we have actual costs for servicing the property in time to the public hearing?
So I see that staff has given us a ballpark figure of a half a million dollars that this project will cost. And I think it's unfair at this point to try and nail that down to any finer detail at this point, advocate. Please.
Yeah, I just mean, like, we need a number.
Well, that was the number that's in your report, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The financial implications.
So it's going to be a better number, or a more--
A breakdown of that cost. I mean, we're basically at a point where we're open to discuss the details of--
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, so let's be clear what we're looking at, then. We're looking at the fact that there is an agreement at this point, tentatively, with B.C. Housing that will be finalized once we've gone through the public process. But in that deal, and you can clarify the details if you want, it's costing, it'll cost the city approximately $500,000. It will, it would include a plan that would better utilize those four lots in terms of access to the housing development. What are some of the other aspects of what's on the table?
Well, there's ample room for parking. There's going to be green area. There should be room for storage by the resident. The other important thing is that this is not going to be a facility that's going to house 34 drug addicts or alcoholics. It's going to house, what, 10 or 12, I believe, is the number. They are one-bedroom units, and--
Okay, Counselor Krog has--
Yeah, that was the first part, was the cost for the public hearing. I would like to say that throughout this whole thing, B.C. Housing has placed our community between a rock and a hard place. No matter where the project goes, and they're saying it's going somewhere, it's going to affect the community. In a perfect world, it all turns out nice, super run, nobody notices, people get back on track, it's a fabulous thing. I grew up in an environment similar to what we're talking about tonight, and it's not a good place, right? So B.C. Housing, we had no pit camp. We don't even know how many homeless. They have no actual data to justify the project. That's all I'm going to say about that for right now. But in response to Counselor Thompson's comment that it won't be full of users, only 10 or 12, that number is just based on how many people are at the worming center right now, right? And then there's talk about camps everywhere on the outskirts. So it's, no, that's what it's designed for. Supportive housing, it's a web facility, and it will fill.
And you're speaking against the motion or for the motion?
Oh, I was just trying to be all, stuff all over the place. Now, I support the motion to go to second reading, or first and second reading, because that takes it straight to the public. And then, then we have their response. We've seen response up to this point. So let's get it officially on the record, and then we'll, well, I'm going to make my decision based on that. I don't want the project, period.
Counselor Moslin.
Yes, Your Worship, I speak in favor of this motion because I believe, like Counselor Krog, that this debate has to go to the public. You know, when I ran for council, I knew that this term was going to present us with some heart-wrenching, sleep-depriving decisions, and this is one of them, you know. We've received your letters. We've read your letters. We know how hard this is. Of course, we have received earlier letters from the business community too, you know. The whole community needs to confront itself. We need to put this to a public hearing. It's bigger than us. I will, I promise that I will try to keep an open mind. But what I really want to give with this motion is the chance for the public to have a hearing, because all these conversations about housing, as I pointed out earlier tonight, are out there somewhere in the never, never. We need to have the conversation now. And I really do appreciate the groups that are trying to have the conversation. Citizens for the Better Grant Works, they're trying to have a conversation. Other whispers of hope people with their open AGM, trying to have the conversation. Yeah, we need to get the conversation out in the public right now. I certainly understand and empathize the anxieties that the immediate neighborhood is going through. I'm hoping to hear, you know, as Counselor Thompson has said, some good points, and I expect points for all that gone. It is very sad that we are put into this situation. But the river didn't ask us either. The river just happened, right? Well, that's what happened. B.C. Housing didn't ask us. It's just happened. And I'm sorry for the pun, but we just have to maybe go with the flow. We haven't got, they're not giving us the time. We have to make the best decisions we can in a short timeframe. And that's why I support this motion, because it will take it to a public hearing, and the public will be able to give us their best advice.
Counselor Zelensky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got, I guess, two requests. I'd like two definitions added to this bylaw. It's not going to add any, it's not going to take any extra time or anything, but if we could get a different definition of supportive housing and a definition of commercial that we could pass at the same time this bylaw. I think it's just, those two definitions are part of this discussion, and I think we need them in our zoning bylaw.
My understanding was that we were given a directive to have a look at these issues and do workshops over the summer, and then deal with this for September?
On the supportive housing definition of where we're going to put it or what it is?
It was also a discussion around what commercial, what council's vision and the community's vision was for the commercial downtown core.
Right.
So what we were planning on was workshopping with the Downtown Association, with the public and the council to determine that and then come up with that. And I've got a resolution from only a month ago that says that we're going to do that for September, so we'll make the council one swing that forward. Might take something else, something--
I understand that we're moving towards having a definition of supportive housing that is in our official community plan so that we can begin to tell people around the community, this is where we would put this housing.
Oh, and I understand about changing the OPC and everything. This is just a definition, because I see in 2A, we're changing definitions already, so we're starting to meddle into those things already. So that's my concern, is that since supportive housing is mentioned in 5944K, we should have a definition before we pass this bylaw anyway, of supportive housing.
Good point.
So we need that definition since it's highlighted in the changes already.
And the wording of our bylaw, am I missing something here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but we were wanting to deal with this specific property, with this specific issue, you know, with comprehensive development zone to get through this particular property or these particular properties, and look at the broader community as a whole when we're looking at where you want to identify supportive housing in the community. And that should be through, you know, a formal process that includes workshops and it's typical planning process for zoning or a CPM. And this is where we have open houses and workshops, and we work through these pieces with the community. So we were just addressing this particular location and this just particular instance for now.
So, Mr. Mayor--
Please.
If it, the title of this is "The Following Uses and No Other Uses Are Permitted," and it says supportive housing, without a definition of supportive housing, we don't know what the use is. So we do need a definition of supportive housing.
I'm not sure what Counselor Zelensky's asking here.
I understand what Counselor Moslin's asking for. It's not really necessary at this time. Sorry. So define, no, just define.
No, that's--
I'm going to let Wendy speak to this.
Sorry, yeah.
Do you want this back, Wendy?
Oh, good idea.
Wendy's going to try and define it for you.
Probably.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In previous discussions about supportive housing, we did have come up with a definition that could be added to the zoning bylaw. However, we were just, at this time, we were just dealing with that site, lots A, B, C, and D. And the way the bylaw's written out, that is the only place in the city that would permit a supportive housing project, however you define it. But there is an option of defining it as housing consisting of dwellings with support services on site that may or may not include collective dining facilities, laundry facilities, counseling, educational services, homemaking, and transportation.
So that's how we're defining it for this site?
It's not specifically defined in the zoning bylaw.
That's the problem, Mr. Mayor, is we're listing supportive housing as a use in this new zone, but we don't have a definition of supportive housing. So it's just whether what Wendy said is the definition, great, but we need one in the bylaw before we do these changes.
Can we add that to the bylaw, Wendy?
I think that's not reasonable.
Yeah, that's--
That was given once, and then as a result of the last discussion--
Okay, so we'll add that in the definition of the, in the bylaw.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. And you're right, commercial, we talked about.
Okay, yes, all right. Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, also, to follow up on what the Lord said, both--
Yeah, also, to follow up on what Dolores said, both the OCP and the zoning bylaw go hand in hand, and they both need to be reviewed in depth, in detail. This was kind of a rush, in order to meet the requirements of BC Housing, so that we could see.
Right.
And I'm looking forward to the next, the discussions and strategic plan, so that we can, we get this all together, and we don't find ourselves in these kinds of, we have to eat all situations.
Okay, and Counselor Corlick, you haven't spoken on this, do you wish to?
Um, I'm going to vote in support of it, because, that's all I can say.
Okay. That's it, then, we're down to Crunch, Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, just, just reconfirming that I support it going to the public.
Sorry.
I don't support the project.
Okay.
But I support it going to the public for their choosing location.
Okay, and so, the motion is on the table, with the addition of the definitions that planning is putting in there, and I'm going to vote against the motion. I've been somewhat inconsistent, because I do believe it needs to go before the public, but I have to start being consistent with my beliefs. I think this project is costing way too much of city money. I think that it's moving from a bad situation, which Second Street was not great, but we had come to the point where we were going to make it work, and it was going to be an inviting entrance to the city, when this began to turn the other direction. I do believe at this point that, well-run and well-operated, we're denying the downtown core population of people that will help to bring the downtown core to life. And so, I think that the concentration of, as Counselor Crogg has mentioned, the council, the concentration of people in the area of low income that we're forcing into that small area is too much. I think it's a really bad decision, and it's going from bad to worser. So, I'll be. I'm not allowed to clap. All right, ready for the motion? This is to first and second reading, taking it through the public process. All those in favor, opposed, motion is carried. Okay, that brings us to questions from the public, and so I open it up to anyone from the public who would like to speak. Let's keep it tight, because it looks like there'd be a few people. Now, Mr. Scott.
I'd just like to point out a few things in this conversation. It's obviously a very complicated situation.
Can you speak up, please?
It's obviously a very complicated situation that.
You have to point it at your face. Point it at your face.
What I'd like to say first and foremost is this. I don't think too many people have a very good understanding of the way that BC Housing works, and who will be housed in these facilities. BC Housing works on a list. You put your name on the list, if you qualify for the particular housing that you're applying for, then your name proceeds down the list. We have no guarantee in any way whatsoever that anybody from Grand Forks will be in any of these locations. That's first and foremost. And there's a misconception going on right now in this town. People think that this complex that's been built is for the people that are displaced by flood. That's not the case. It isn't the case in any way whatsoever. In the supportive housing, it's the same thing. Okay? Just because we've got 12 active drug addicts in our town that we know about, since the warming center has been here, we've got about 25, because word gets out that there's freebies going on, and this is what happens. So, we've got more now. But there's nothing saying anywhere that any one of those people are going to go into this supportive housing that's being put on the table. So, having said that, I want you to consider that, and I wish that it would be put out there to the public, so the public understands a little bit better as to what's going on. Mr. Taylor, we've had conversations about this, and you've just stated that you believe that the proposed location on 70th Avenue is a mistake. You compared it to the Jane and Finch projects in Toronto, and those turned out to be a disaster. They're agado, and it's the same sort of process that we're talking about dealing with in this location here. The 70th Street location, it's a recreational, and it's a residential area. You've approved a transitional women's house for women that are having tough times in relationships, and they need to heal, and they need a place of support. You're proposing to build a facility 100 feet away from that project. There's no security there, none whatsoever. This is, this is not a safe situation that you're proposing. It's, we have children in that park. Since the warming center's been in this location that it has, I've had three people that I've had to drag off of my fence physically, because they were encroaching on my property. Okay? We don't have a police department in this town to facilitate the problems that we experience on a day-to-day basis now. And we're proposing to put 32, and I suspect it'll go back up to 42, if given the location, because in the bylaw, you've also asked to expand the building to what seems to me would be a four-story building, thus increasing the beds that you would be offering. We don't have a police department to deal with this. There are no statistics anywhere that you can find, anywhere pertaining to the situation that we're being proposed here in our town. There is no statistics, because it isn't happening in a small town. The only statistics you can get on these wet houses is in Vancouver, they've got eight of them that they've built in the last few years. And this success rate is, it's debatable. Okay? They've had, in the beginning of these houses that they've built, there were a lot of complaints in the beginning, and then there were more complaints, and more complaints, and more complaints, and then it ebbed off after a time. And the only reason that happened is because they have a police department that deals with it. They were there when they were called, and they dealt with the situation. Now, if somebody was breaking the law, they took them to jail. Okay? And they dealt with it. We don't have that luxury here at all, and it's not going to change, regardless of what anybody thinks. This is not going to change in Grand Forks. If we increase our population to over 5,000, and get ourselves a private police department, well, then perhaps it could change, but that's down the road. Okay? When I talked to Dolores in the planning department approximately seven weeks ago, and asked her if the city had bought those lots, she stated that they did. And I asked her, what did they buy those lots for? And she stated to me, quote, unquote, that those lots were bought under the condition that they were to be put into the 10- to 15-year West End Plan. I was deceived. Those lots weren't bought for that in any way whatsoever. They were bought for the purpose of what we're dealing with here today. I ask you all to consider this heavily. It's a moral issue you're talking about. I personally, I don't agree with a wet facility anywhere, because it won't work, it doesn't work. Statistically, nobody can show me anywhere that works. You go down to the States and look at the cadet programs in Seattle and whatnot, where they actually put people through detox in a 90-day or 120-day programs. Those programs work, they have up to a 93% success rate. And they're doing it now, because they're in dire straits, just like everybody else in North America. We're all facing this problem. But good gosh, folks, let's deal with it properly. Don't throw our neighborhood and this city under the bus. It's not morally correct. It's a dilemma I know that we're all faced with, but we can do better. Don't let BC Housing bully us into a situation that's going to come back and bite us for the rest of our lives. I have a suggestion. We bought a fire truck in the city here a few years ago, and it was quite expensive, it was over a million dollars. It was an expense that apparently we couldn't afford not to encounter. So, we did it, and we put a $51 a year surcharge on everybody's property taxes to pay for that fire truck. I suggest to you that if you feel, and Kathy, you stated that you feel your hands are tied because BC Housing is strong-arming and bullying, and you feel that they can dictate whatever they want to do, I don't believe that. I believe it can be fought in the courts. I know Maple Ridge has taken it to the courts, they haven't succeeded, but they still have another avenue of appeal. I believe that there isn't anybody in this city that would have a problem with adding that on to our property taxes, for the sanctity of the city to keep it a nice little town. If you allow this to happen, the negative that it is going to create, you'll never live it down, I guarantee it. And I believe that each and every one of you know that. So, I ask you, I plead with you, please, look at this realistically, look at the consequence of what you're proposing. We can do better, we really can. Thank you.
Okay. In terms of respectful language now, we refer to it as low barriers, so wet facilities are kind of not descriptive at this point in talking to the system, so.
What does low barrier mean then?
I understand the political correctness of the terminology.
Yeah, just, that's the terminology you're using.
In reality, I would choose to call it something else, but I won't do that this evening.
Yeah, but what is, just for clarity, what does low barrier technically mean? Like, what's?
Well, it, to me, it means that people can continue to use substances in their own home, which is what these one-bedroom units will be. So, people can continue to consume drugs or consume alcohol in their own homes, providing that they follow certain rules, and that they're not disrupting, there's a bunch of rules that go with this. We saw in Kelowna when we went over there, and John Howard explained their low-barrier rules. So, there are rules, it's not without rules, but people are allowed to treat their one-bedroom unit as their own home, and they are able to consume whatever.
Can they deal drugs out of their homes?
Pardon?
Can they deal drugs out of their homes?
No, definitely not, you know, that is not tolerated by John Howard, or, I don't believe, really tolerated here by our nonprofit society, which would be.
We have not signed a contract up for this yet, and John Howard Society's been around for over 125 years, and they've been dealing with these issues for that period done. What you're asking our societies in Grand Forks to encounter, we're not qualified to do it.
Okay, and I appreciate your opinion on it.
And as I say, I plead with you to really take a reconsideration of the way you're looking at this. And as I said, as a taxpayer, I would be more than happy to put my money where my mouth is, so that you can hire legal counsel and take it to the Supreme Court if you have to. We raised a million dollars for a fire truck, we surely don't need that much to take this to court.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And other comments?
Sir, you were mentioning it was a half million dollars.
Identifying yourself.
My name's Neil McGregor. You mentioned that it's going to cost half a million dollars for the infrastructure costs of that. I take it before, when developers came in there, they were going to have to absorb that cost?
Actually, that includes us sharing the cost of putting in the infrastructure from 19th Street up 70th to the lots. Sharing that with BC Housing is my understanding.
Do you share that with other contractors, with other developers that come into the community?
Not in my knowledge.
So, one other, one other statement then, so it's going to cost us taxpayers $500,000 for 34 suites?
Other part of that is the purchase of the Second Street location, so we, the city would end up owning the Second Street location.
Why, what's, what's the city going to do with the Second Street location? It was on the market for three and a half years, and Joe BC, or BC Housing came in and bought it with a number company.
Right.
It had no, no interest at all, so we're going to have, the city's going to buy a piece of property and sell it on it for 10 years, and then have us as taxpayers pay that money for 34 units? I mean, the cost effectiveness is, doesn't even make sense. And Counselor Thompson, you, Counselor Thompson, you ran under the platform that you were going to be fiscally responsible to us. How can you be fiscally responsible to us if we're just going to buy it as a dollar expert?
I'm just reminding you tonight that we are going to a public hearing on this, and so I encourage you to keep it fairly tight this evening in terms of not getting into that heavy detail, because there will be a public process that we're moving towards. But, but those are good questions.
Can I ask one, one word?
Certainly.
Counselor, Counselor Dooley, you excused yourself, because you're, how far away from this project?
It's right across the street, and then there's a little bit of.
So, you're about two and a half blocks, if you go by road?
Oh, no, less, less than that.
By, by road?
Oh, it's just, just going separate.
Okay, from 68 to 70, it's two blocks, and you're half a block, and then you have to come back, get half a block. It's almost three blocks by road. So, if this fails, does it automatically go, if this zoning bylaw fails, does it automatically go back to Second Street?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Corlick, how far away are you from Second Street?
Me?
Yeah, how many blocks?
Three blocks, max.
Okay, so if he had to excuse himself, yeah, if this paths or fails, and it goes into your neighborhood, how come you didn't have to excuse yourself?
Honestly, it never occurred to me.
The, the issue of conflict of interest is a personal call.
Okay, so we have some counselors that are really concerned about stuff, and others that aren't.
It's a personal call by the counselors.
Okay. Thank you.
Can Nigel, Mr. James, and then jump in here?
Thank you, Your Monsieur. My name is Nigel James.
Nigel?
And I'm a member of the corporation. I stress the word corporation, because anybody who resides within and has property in Grand Forks has an interest, a great interest in the corporation and how it is run. The, I know that there is the amendment about supportive housing, I believe, but the, perhaps the more important thing is two. This is from paragraph two in the zoning bylaw amendment. It says, "and other housing with supporting services." I would love to know what supporting services is defined as, and who is going to pay for those supporting services.
Thank you, Mr. James. And, sir?
Now, Wilson, I have my other concerns, I'll take probably, but just so you're made, I have a major concern now, because I've listened to counselor for counselor talk about how they're being, call it bullied, or pushed, or whatever, but rushed into decisions that they don't even know what they're talking about. And that is a real concern, if you're going to be a councilor dealing with something like this. You can't be rushed into making decisions. So, if you're sitting here telling us how rushed you feel, and you're rushing this in, I think it's time to sit back and relook at the whole issue.
Sir, further?
I'm just going to, do I have the floor?
Pardon?
Just one quick question.
Yes, and if you keep it.
Oh, it's very short. It's very short. It coincides with what he just stated. And, and what I would really like to see, is I would like to see the city council put a moratorium of 60 to 90 days on this, period, across the board. Cool off, think about it.
Okay, thank you. And further comment?
I have a comment with Annie Swud, Great Pier, citizen. I heard two people tonight talk about the fact that they've been having trouble sleeping, dealing with this conversation in their head at night. What happens after this is in place? Do you think that I'm going to be sleeping? My safety, it's not just going to be, oh, I'm worried about what might happen, those things are going to be happening. I'm going to be not sleeping at night, worrying about every little bump and crash that I hear in the vicinity of my house, because it's right at my fence line. I was one of the people that signed the petition not to have it at Second Street. I understand it's a bad location, but all those businesses, those people go home at night, they are, it's their business, it's not their life, it's not their safety. So, I ask you to consider that, when I'm not sleeping, probably for the next 30 years.
Thank you, Liza. Further comment, anyone?
James Tyler. If we can convince people that Second Street was appropriate, and, you know, the promise was this is going to be so well-run. was this is going to be so well-run, so well-managed, so presentable, what, if we capitulated on that because we clearly didn't believe it, why is now the new location appropriate? You know, if we can't convince the people that this is doable in the downtown core, why is it doable over there? Also, is there an infrastructure for needle collection? And, you know, we know it's going to be debris and detritus that's going to be associated with this. So, you know, we need to think about that stuff as well. Also, mental health, addiction, is that part of the housing complex? Is that built into it, or is it just some people overseeing some lodgings? That would be my concern.
Okay. And just to clarify, is twenty-four-hour staffing wherever goes Second or Seventieth? There is about, about, close to a million dollars' worth of operating money to operate both the low-income family unit and the supported housing. The services primarily will come from the outside, but the law and order and control of the building will be managed with funds that are made available through the funding formula with B.C. Housing. So we are mentoring, being mentored by the John Howard Society is working with Boundary Family Services to bring them up to a level of understanding of how they will be operating this. And you're right, they don't have a contract yet, but I don't expect that will even happen until they start putting people into the building, which is not going to be their job, but will be a whole different team of people. Mr. James, keeping it short, your second time.
You mentioned that the funding for the support, et cetera, is that in perpetuity?
That looks like it's in perpetuity as well. Although...
It looks like, coming this short, it's going to be...
Well, I think they're on five-year, five-year, um, three periods?
Three-year periods. They say...
Three-year period?
Funding for thirty-five years.
Thirty-five years.
Yeah, but at three-year chunks. And depending on losing government, unless they're giving us the money upfront, then I'll take it and believe them. It's the only thing I believe that they've said.
In the back there, gentlemen.
Yeah, Larry White. B.C. Housing is people that come in these areas and work and have me like, do they pay taxes to the city?
We will, we will get taxes on the buildings. They're not the same taxation as normally taxed.
It's aggressively based on the tax rates.
Taxes are...
The reason I'm asking, I've lived in place and place for six years now. I love the place. I love Grand Forks. I've been bronze with it. And I'll tell you, the value of our homes, and I'll tell you, I've been at the councils here, I'm sure none of you people want, all those people have been down here frigging backyard, and we all take pride in it. It's bullshit. This didn't happen long before the city even happened here. And I'll tell you, I'm very disappointed in what happened in Grand Forks, and I'm blaming you people, past people too. Very disappointed.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to clarify that when I had the conversation with that gentleman over there, it was after council first bought the properties, and they were not bought for this purpose. They were bought as we were looking at a western sector development plan, and they were bought for looking at the overall area and potential access to the other site. So I did not deceive you on purpose. It was just that that was not in the works at the time when we had our discussion. Council had just bought the properties.
That's funny, because I've heard contradictory statements from city counselors.
Yeah, I guess... I'm sorry, we're going to backtrack a little bit, and then we'll go to the gallery again.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Scott, I heard you saying what was going on in Washington State.
In Seattle.
It's actually Rhode Island.
Yeah.
I recently found out that interior health only funds some beds for detox and rehab, that those people who want to get off their addictions have to go into a private facility and pay for it themselves.
Right.
And that, to me, is wrong.
It is.
And so we have, we put forward a resolution at the AKPLG that the Minister of Health put more funding into rehab and detox facilities for people who can't afford it, people that want to get off and make an improvement, and that I can't do it. We've also put forward a resolution that, and these resolutions will be going forward to the UBCM, which is the, we dispossess credentially. B.C. Housing has to be more open in what they're doing. You know, we were caught just as off-guard as the rest of the community with what they did. I mean, I can remember the hue and cry when they purchased the land with the transition houses.
Absolutely. Everything documented.
Yeah. These were private purchases that were made that the city didn't know knowledge about until after the fact. And we found out about this thirty-four units that was slated for Second Street just before the UBCM last year. And as I said, we, we spoke to the minister, we spoke to B.C. Housing. We were not any happier than anybody in this city. And if, if there were a better location that B.C. Housing would even entertain, I'd be all over it. So, you know, we're doing the best that we believe we can do in the circumstances.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and thank you very much. But I will say this, you can do better. You can do much better.
And we're going to Mr. James for a third...
Your worship, a quick one, and that is that B.C. Housing has, shall we say, been secretive in what they've done here. The bylaw that is opposed can be passed or declined by you, and you're the only people who can do it. You can stop it dead in its tracks.
Yes. Thank you.
Wayne Copan, I'd just, I'd like to just remind council of the situation that we had with the whispers of hope and that down on the river, how many days and weeks and months and money that was spent dealing with these people, and they were just at a warming center. They weren't living there. But every time we have to go down there, we're recovering stolen property, we're cleaning up needles, and we're putting this right by a recreational facility with kids? I don't get it. I'm sorry, guys. I just don't get it.
As well as by low-income housing, that is definitely going to include about forty new families with young children and presumably single parents, so there isn't going to be a lot of, I don't know, I suppose more supportive parenting could be going on. I'm just speculating. But yes, we're going to have such a load of new kids and seniors in the area that don't feel safe. I've been out every day talking to people in the back alley that walk by my house, and they are so upset. They're saying they're not letting their kids come to the park unattended anymore, and this is twelve- and thirteen-year-olds, seniors who say they are afraid to even think of walking down that lane that they've been walking for the last twenty years. So it's just not right. Please, please, think about that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Where, where is this supposed to go then? I don't, I'm not against or for either any location. Where are they, where are these people supposed to go?
To a city where there's...
Resources. Why? Why the city? Why, why, why? What's the difference?
Resources.
Because there's resources in...
Maybe that'll bring resources here.
Yes.
I don't know if everyone here realizes how much mental health is going to have to kick into this. I think they have enough problems running in this town before this happens. Like, mental health can't even control what's going on right now, and you're going to bring more people in.
No, we do have a lack of...
Well, yeah. I'm trying to find people to drive cars and work cashiers, and I can't find them in this town. You're not going to bring in people like that into this town. They're not going to come here. Like, it's crazy.
Yes, just if you people, as council, believe that we're going to bring people into Grand Forks, that's going to be beneficial and very supportive. We have a number of people in place and place that have put their houses up for sale. Last year, just a real quick calculation, we paid about sixty thousand dollars in taxes amongst, for sixteen months. We're a high-tax area, but we're, these people that are selling are not staying in Grand Forks. They're moving out of town. So these are people that have worked all their lives, built their, their dream home, their finished home. They're going to, we're going to live here. I've lived there for twenty years just about. This is our dream home. These are our finished homes. We're all looking at getting right out of Grand Forks, because we went, when we bought, we looked at the city's long-term plan, we looked at zoning, we did all of this. And you guys at a whim, don't just want to change zoning so we can put in that. You want to put in a higher building than anywhere else in Grand Forks. You want to change our zoning for our community use property? You guys have not thought about this. You're changing everything. I imagine some of you people sat on that five-year plan for the city of Grand Forks long-term, and you probably said, this, we'll never change this. And you're changing it all. Like, like, seriously? We moved into Grand Forks, people move here. We have people that keen here to finish their careers so they can retire in Grand Forks. They're not thinking state. You people are chasing people away. You're not, and you know what? You're going to bring in all these people. If you bring in too many, you're going to have to raise our taxes again, which I think some of us got a fourteen percent tax increase.
Twenty.
A twenty, I'm sorry.
Twenty.
I was thirteen. I know there was some fourteens. Taxes, we got tax higher last year increases. Can you think, if people are going to come into this, low-cost housing's going to replace that? And B.C. Housing, that fifty-four unit, and now a thirty-eight in that same block? What's that doing for our area? What's that telling the people that drive through Grand Forks? Like, seriously? Really seriously?
Slumber bell.
Yeah, slumber bell.
I just wanted to follow up, excuse me, on that. We're not, I think somebody asked, called Nibby's or something, I didn't know what it meant. But when this whole project first started in there with the women's open, there were a lot of people in our community that, I was not against it. I was preferred to somebody else, so don't get me wrong. But I wasn't against it. I never took and come to your, you came with this low-cost housing. There has to go somewhere. I agree with the lady sitting here. I have no problem with that. I didn't and have not argued about that. In fact, my neighbors love me. I said, we live in an area with rentals of rabbits. This is appropriate.
No doubt.
You know, and so I'm happy. But to bring in this sort of thing, and like you said, best of all, overcrowding that small area and high-risk individuals in to revictimize people at the shelter, to put their risk of health and safety of the people who are going to move into those new places, plus our community and our ball fields, it just blows my mind. I've got thirty-some years of policing experience. I've been in all these small communities. I've dealt with drugs and alcohol my whole career. I know what's going to happen when you build it, and you do too. It will not be good. It will be awful. You will have crime like you've never seen when that gets built.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe?
Yeah, just, just a note. We didn't bring in the low-cost housing. It was B.C. Housing, their property, they brought it in. It was zoned. They, they handled it poorly. They designed it poorly. They wouldn't take any feedback from anybody, including us. The Second Street, basically that same thing. So they're saying it's going to go somewhere, right? And what we're looking at is this kind of input, but completely on the record, right? And that's why the public here...
Okay, and I'm going to cut it off pretty quick, sir.
Okay, I, I just, I keep hearing B.C. Housing, B.C. Housing, B.C. Housing, and I agree with you, it's bad. But it's the city of Grand Forks that brought the property. It's the city of Grand Forks that's trying to change the zoning, and it's the city of Grand Forks that wants to change the zoning so it goes high instead of down. It's the city of Grand Forks on the Seventieth Street property that's holding all the cards. It is not B.C. Housing. B.C. Housing may be holding the cards for the project, but it's you people that are taking it into a residential playground skate park area. It's nobody else.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I never said it wasn't.
No. And just to wrap things up here, this, this is the schedule of what's coming down, so public notice will go out to sites in the area, and June the fifth will be a public hearing, three to six, in chambers. And although we're going to try and pull it off in chambers, we're going to have to cycle people through if necessary, and we'll have it go on as long as necessary.
No, everybody has to hear.
Yeah, you have to...
Would you consider, would you consider possibly purely auditorium or something?
You know what? I agree with you.
Good idea. It will not accommodate the people that are going to come to this public court.
We did talk about that. I think the bigger the group, doesn't mean more input from people either.
But it allows everybody to hear everybody.
Okay, listen, I'm going to take that under advisement, that we look at a larger setting and discuss that with council at the break.
So, your worship, so the required advertising has to show the quarters, and council will note that the advertising is for tomorrow's paper.
Okay.
Right? But I think that if Mr. Johnson is willing to do this live, like he is all we, like is doing right now, that will likely allow for other people to be able to hear and witness as well. So I think that the hearing part will be allowed, so if there's people that want to be heard, they can bring it out in writing as well, and...
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we're going to work with the facilities we have here. We're going to make sure everybody has a chance. We're looking at a block of time here of three hours. I'm sure that that will give ample opportunity for everyone who wishes...
Also, can I just, you, the hours for that are from three o'clock to six o'clock, I believe?
That's what's there, yeah.
Could you extend those hours for working people so that we can come until nine o'clock?
So, your worship...
Because most people work until six o'clock.
And there is nothing else going on that night either.
So, so, your worship, we have it from three to six, but if there are other people that are still waiting to be heard...
Right.
So the actual time would be three to six, but council can take and adjust the time for persons to be heard here. They're not going to keep it open and with nobody here, but as long as there's people here.
So we'll listen to them. So we're going to exhaust the voice of the citizens here. Counselor, you have a comment?
Could we arrange for either computer, laptop, tablet, something in the hallway, so people in the hallway can have the visual? All we need to do is put something in there and dial and...
Fire code does not allow activity in the hallway. We have the same issue during the water meters.
Yeah.
You can't have crowds gathering in the hallway.
Okay, and we're trying to have the same question, James?
It's, your worship, it's a public meeting. That means, as far as I'm concerned, the whole public is in one spot to discuss it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Precisely.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say too. We've all set our pointer, and you people have set it too back to us. We all have to be part of this, and I'll tell you, you've heard it here, people talking to neighbors and everybody else. I'll tell you, there's going to be a lot of people, Grand Forks is a media. You can't have them standing out there on the streets. You've got to have them all listening to what's going on, because if you don't, you guys are going to get the same question twelve times out of here. You don't like that.
You know what? I think we're at an impasse at this point.
I have a question for staff, though. Kate's not here. I could ask her personally. So it's going in the paper...
Tomorrow.
For tomorrow edition.
It's probably already gone to press.
But I don't know when they go to print.
I think they've already printed.
Yeah.
It's done. It's due today.
It looks like we're pretty much committed into using the council chambers at this time because we're advertising it in the paper tomorrow.
That's all right.
So, your worship... Can I just say one thing?
Please, somebody save me here.
I just wanted to say that when there's the public hearing, council is here to listen. We can't debate, we can't, we can ask questions, but we can't, we can't answer anything. We're here to listen to what you have to say. We're here to listen to what you have to say. So just, you know, this was a good exercise to, for some discussion between members of council and yourselves, but if the public hearing, that won't be happening.
And, I'm the public, so I can ask the questions. No. The written submissions, we've been receiving letters and one of the first comments that I got was, well, it's not convenient if it's only a few hours because people might be at work. But they can submit in writing their thoughts, their ideas, and it all counts. It carries the same weight as if you stood at a microphone. Okay? So don't, you know, just let that opportunity disappear.
So is this discussion closed now?
Excuse me, we're still in the meeting and I'm not sure what mayor or what mayor called.
I just decided to do my own thing.
All right, so we're listening to the issues in terms of the space we're working with here and there are some ideas that Kevin has come up with and Diane has talked about. We'll try and address this. It may mean, you know, having to correct information that we're putting out, so bear with us, but we're certainly listening to the fact that this may not be the way to do the public hearing in a small room of this nature. So I'm going to call it close to the meeting tonight.
Can I have just one comment before you do that? I'm going to change the topic totally.
To what?
To one, of gratitude. From the council, Canadian Peace Congress, the B.C. Southern Tier Peace Coalition, I want to thank the city, the mayor and city council for supporting the Regina Peace Council and our conference there in April or end of March.
Great.
I was very proud to be able to read out the letter of support from this city to the wider peace and social justice movement. Thank you very much. And they send their greetings to you.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Crowe? Thank you very much for everybody's patience.
Thank you for...